Guys.
I got it.
We are live, guys.
One minute and we start? Less than a minute. It's seven thirty. Welcome, everyone. Welcome to this meeting of Wisbeach Town Council. If a member wishes to speak on an agenda item, he or she should indicate by raising your hand. Voting on a proposal or recommendation should also be indicated on this way. I will now invite you to confirm your attendance. Through a roll call, I shall read out in alphabetical order each member's surname. Invite him or her to indicate by saying here that he or she is present. councillor Hill?
Not yet, chairman.
Councillor Miss Hoy?
Present.
Councillor Human?
So, here.
Councillor Cateringham?
I have an apology from councillor Cateringham, chairman.
Councillor Lynn?
Here.
Councillor Mall?
Here.
Councillor Meekins?
Here.
Councillor Oliver?
Here.
Councillor Patrick?
Once again, I have an apology from councillor Patrick, chairman.
Councillor Mrs Warwalk?
Present.
Councillor Preston?
Here.
Councillor Rackley?
Here.
Councillor Tipton?
Here.
Thank you. Councillor Tierney?
Here.
Councillor Topgood?
Hello.
Councillor Mrs Wolfwalk?
Here.
Councillor Wing?
Here.
Thank you, members. And, okay, item number one, to receive members' apologies for absence. I invite the clerk to report any apologies for absence that he has received from members of the council.
Thank you, chairman. As I just mentioned on the roll call, I have apologies from councillors Patrick and and Cateringham.
Okay, thank you. Item number two, open forum, public participation. Clerk to report. In normal circumstances, members of the public will have the opportunity to make an oral representation to the meeting of the public. This opportunity does not currently exist. Members of the public are invited to submit a text of their representation in writing to the town clerk prior to the meeting. Any representation received will be read out by the clerk. I want the clerk to read out any written representation that he has received from members of the public.
Thank you, chairman. On this occasion, I've received one representation from a Mrs Virginia Buckner, and it relates to the Wisbeach mega incinerator, and I will read as written. It says, "In the scoping document, the planning inspectorate has agreed to exclude many of the concerns Wisbeach residents have raised, such as air pollution. However, the inspectorate has recognised the importance of highways and transport and therefore key to presenting the case for refusal. I would like to propose that Wisbeach Town Council engages a specialist consultant to deal with this specific area on behalf of Wisbeach residents. With their enormous expertise, I've written to UK WIN organisation to ask if they could recommend such a highways/transport consultant specialist. This council should ask both Fennan and Cambridgeshire County Council to contribute towards the consultants' costs. This would demonstrate their continued support and highlight to the community, the planning inspectorate and MVV that we are all united against this proposal. The town council should set up a working party regarding the mega incinerator. Oh, sorry, the council has set up a working party regarding the mega incinerator. Have any meetings been held since April, and if so, what actions have been decided? Finally, we have posters of different sizes which businesses and residents all around Wisbeach have erected to show their support for the campaign against this dreadful proposal. Would the town council like to erect a banner on behalf of the community to provide a visual display of their commitment against the incinerator? You are welcome to have one. Also, would those councils who have businesses or premises with high visibility in Wisbeach also like to receive posters to show their support? That is the end of the representation, chairman."
Okay, thank you. We just moved to next agenda?
I think councillor Press has his hand up, chairman.
Oh, sorry, yeah, councillor Press, please, sorry.
I'm sorry, chairman, just want to say, we will reply to that in writing.
Okay. Item number three, to receive members' declaration of disclosure of pecuniary, non-disclosure pecuniary or non-pecuniary interest in relation to any agenda item. See guidance notes at the end of the agenda. I invite members to declare any interest that they have in relation to any of the items on this agenda. And declaring interest, please, the nature, for example, friendship and extent in that case, non-pecuniary of that interest. Is there any declarations? No? Item number four, Fennan District Council to receive information in relation to district council activities relevant to Wisbeach and to consider the submission of response to that council consultation exercise in relation to a review of Wisbeach Alcohol Public Spaces Protection Order. I understand that there may be one or two matters to which the clerk wishes to draw a member's attention, particularly the specific item mentioned on the agenda. The item also provides the opportunity for those Wisbeach Town councillors who are also members of Fennan District Council to do likewise.
Thank you, chairman. As you said, a couple of items in terms of Fennan District Council, and as you say, once I've mentioned these, there's a chance for Fennan District councillors who are also members of the town council to give any updates if they have any. Firstly, there's the item as printed in terms of the Wisbeach Alcohol Public Spaces Protection Order. But before we move on to that, members have all received the correspondence from the district council. You will recall agreeing in principle to support an application to the county council's communities capital fund. The district council put in an application for a new pavilion-type building at Wisbeach Park at an estimated cost of £250,000, to which the district council have invited other supporters to indicate they would provide an element of matched funding. I've had an email from the head of leisure services at Fennan District Council, which I shall read to, and I think it's fairly self-explanatory. It says, "Please, could you ask Wisbeach Town Council for financial support? We are bidding for £250,000 from the Cambridgeshire County Council's Communities Capital Fund. I expect that the CCF would want to see at least 10% match funding, but for the project of this size, possibly more. I'd suggest a minimum of £5,000 from Wisbeach Town Council, preferably 10 or more. Regardless, I will also have to write in that we would be applying for other funding to top up the CCF grant. Other funders are less reliable than councils in terms of agreement and application times. Please let me know your thoughts and an expected timeframe from the town council in terms of any decision-making. Well, I did inform Mr Hughes at the district council that it would be considered by members this evening. As I said before, members did indicate in principle their support for the project previously, and that they would be prepared to consider at least a £5,000 allocation of match funding towards the project. Over to members, chairman."
Councillor Hoy, please.
Yeah, just, Terry, would you like us to talk about the other project at the same time now, or?
Yes, yes, that's absolutely fine. I thought you were mentioning other county, but it could go into either item, so.
Also, as well as this, I've been working with the ward councillors and clerks on another idea. If screen sharing is enabled, I just wouldn't mind just sharing. It's obviously because the public wouldn't be able to see it as well. Can we possibly enable that, please? Because one of the proposals is for a sort of, I say water park, but don't sort of think massive with slides and a big thing like that. It's more kind of a splash park. I'll share my screen view. Is that working now? Can you guys see it? So that's sort of, that's sort of the idea. Obviously, this is one that was in a place called Newbury in Berkshire. That was a similar scheme that they would be suggesting. So Fennan have also put that forward with the county council's support to this fund. And as a result of that, we've got through stage one, but they are also asking for a similar contribution of £5,000 to show support. Personally, I think, so obviously, if we were to support both schemes, that is a big cost of £10,000, but we do have, you know, Terry and David have been building up our reserves for the last few years to make sure we're in a healthy position. And, you know, and we need to be, because if we don't have enough money, then when projects come along like this, then we can't afford them. So, you know, it's good to be building up those reserves, and I do think that these two projects require the money personally, and I think we should support them. I know it might sound like a lot. And we're not guaranteed to get them anyway, so, you know, obviously, we have to go through to stage two of the bid, and we might not, we might not get them after stage two, but I think that if we would spend £5,000 on each, just to talk, just for members of the public, so they know what the first project is, because obviously, they haven't had the emails. The first project was to, it's to renovate the toilets in the park, as well as providing sort of a community building which would be a cafe, and sort of hiring out of different facilities and an art, community art space, as well as obviously the new refurbished toilets. So it'd be quite a big new facility in the park. So that's both the proposals.
Yeah, thank you. Councillor Tierney, please.
Yes, thank you, chairman. I really like both of these proposals. I think they're brilliant, brilliant ideas. And I love Wisbeach Town Park, and a lot of people love it. A lot of people get fantastic use out of it, and we often get told it's a lovely resource, but this can only improve it. It's in keeping with what's there. It's not over the top. It's not too much. And it just supports and builds on what's already available in the park, and I think just makes it exceptional. I'd love to see both of them succeed, and I support both. Thank you.
Councillor Human, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I think they're two wonderful schemes. Just a thought on finance. As we haven't had the Rock Festival this year, will there be funds available from there to be spent on this project?
I just answered before, if you don't mind, and just to say, yeah, I mean, if we don't spend money on the festivals, it'll be going into general reserves anyway, so you're right, almost top up the park.
Councillor?
Thank you.
Human, you want to come back on that, sorry? Councillor Human?
No, I'm, councillor Hoy and I are talking the same language. Yes. So we don't have to deal too much in reserves. Where we were going to spend something on one project, we can spend on another project. I think it's a wonderful idea, and I sincerely hope it goes ahead.
Councillor Wing, please.
Thank you, chairman. Yes, I am in support in principle of these projects. My only concern is because we aren't getting the accounts tonight, because delay or whatever, we aren't fully aware of what the council situation is. That said, thanks to councillor Human and Hoy, they have actually just given not assurances, but some kind of lead that there should be extra funds. The other concern is we are in the middle of this epidemic. There are lots of councils around the country becoming without money. I just want to ensure that we have the funds. That's really it. Okay, thank you.
Town clerk, please. I can't hear you.
Sorry, apologies, I muted myself. Yeah, the question about the account situation for tonight, and obviously I'll go up to that, the appropriate agenda item. The Policy and Resources Committee did receive at their main meeting, and the minutes have been circulated to this council, where we're actually at in terms of the end of year, and it's estimated that we will have something like £140,000 in general reserves, which is about £50,000 up on last year at this time. So I don't think there are any issues in terms of being able to fund these contributions, and as councillor Hoy has already said, any underspendings on any existing budget will fall into reserves, so it swings and roundabouts in effect.
Any more comment? Councillor Lynn, please.
Thanks, chairman. Yeah, I just wanted to say that Wisbeach Town Council at the moment are working on some really good projects for Wisbeach, and this is definitely two of them. I think everybody's been feeling a bit low just recently. The whole town feels a bit low, and it needs a lift, and it needs to see that Wisbeach Town Council are working on improvements. And by getting these through, by getting these to over the finish line, I think this will give the whole town a really good boost. And both have my support. Thank you.
Any more comments? Yeah, I would like to support as well, but it seems lots of big money involved, and it could be very good for Wisbeach as well. Do we need to go to proposal, or? Can I have a proposal, please? Councillor Lynn? And a second?
Yeah, I would like to propose, thank you. That we go, that we offer £5,000 to each project, sorry.
I'm very pleased to second, chairman.
Second, yeah, okay. All in favour? Can you have a vote, please?
That's unanimous, chairman.
Okay, thank you very much.
And then if I may, chairman, taking you back to the agenda, we have also consultation from the district council on the review of the Wisbeach Alcohol Public Spaces Order. An email from FDC has been sent to all councils, I think which took you through to a link to the order. Obviously, asking for any members' comments for us to feedback in terms of a consultation response on behalf of the town council.
I have any? Councillor Warwalk, please.
So I just wanted to sit and say I'm in full support of us continuing to do the reapplication in October. It's a positive tool for us to be using, and I see no reason for us not to do that. So I would like to put the comments back that we would like to do that.
Councillor Wing, please.
Yeah, I'd like to, that was a proposal, I would like to second it. Absolutely, I think we should continue.
Any more comments from councils?
So it seems I have a proposal for councillor Mrs Warwalk and a seconder from councillor Wing. If no one else wishes to speak, would you like to put that to the vote, chairman?
Yeah, can we have a vote, please?
Once again, that is unanimous. That concludes the agenda items. I have it. Is there anything else from anyone else?
Anybody else wants to make any comments? Item number five, Cambridgeshire County Council to receive information in relation to county council activities relevant to Wisbeach and future to minutes 12-20 to consider the submission for a future application for local highway improvement scheme for 2021-22. I understand that there is maybe one or two matters to which the clerk wishes to draw a member's attention, particularly the specific item mentioned on the agenda. This item is also provided the opportunity for those Wisbeach Town councillors who are also members of Cambridgeshire County Council to do likewise.
Thank you, chairman. If you'd like me to kick off, I don't have anything specific to report other than the item which is mentioned, particularly on the agenda, which is to consider the submission of a further application for LHI scheme for 2021-22. Members will recall back at the last meeting, they submitted one proposal, and there's the opportunity for the council to submit two.
Thank you. Councillor Tierney, please.
Yes, thank you, chairman. So I did say at the last meeting that I was looking at a couple of proposals. The one that most people have asked me to do involves some speed reduction measures, some physical speed reduction measures on Tinkers Drive in Waterleys. So what I would like to ask the team at county to do is to devise a scheme with a view to trying to protect the residents' parking and utility on the road, but to slow the speed down for people who do go above the speed limit. And then there are actually a couple of other roads in Waterleys that I've also asked for some help. Well, I can only do one a year, but my intention is for the next three years to put in bids to cover the other roads as well. But there'll be some discussion about that in future. Hopefully, everyone will support this, because people do go too fast down Tinkers Drive too often. A lot of young people live along there, and a lot of elderly people as well in the area. Pedestrians use the road a lot, and I just think it would be a good idea to make people feel safer. Thank you.
Okay, that's a proposal. Can I have a second for councillor Tierney's proposal, please? And councillor Mall, this is a second. Can I have a vote, please?
That is once again unanimous, chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Hoy, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to, on the county council, because obviously it's a county council section. So obviously, as I mentioned previously, we are trying to do a lot of these county council bids. We've got a lot going on at the moment, two things in the park. We've started, obviously, these tennis lessons that are now available, that we're offering for people for low cost. So while that's not to do with the county thing, that's another thing happening in the park. Also, another big thing as part of this county council project is the marketplace. So we've put in a bid for the marketplace to get some money to do the works to it. We've put in a bid for £150,000. The committee is deciding on the 6th of August, so I'm feeling very positive because we've got this far. Is a good sign. I mean, obviously, it's not a definite, because, you know, they could still potentially say no at the committee stage, but my understanding is the further along you go, the more chance you've got. So hopefully, by the next council meeting, we'll have some good news on that.
Councillor Lynn, please, sorry? Been muted.
Sorry, chairman, I was just crossing my fingers that the marketplace application goes through, because this could make a massive difference to the way we do that.
Okay, councillor Tierney, please.
Thank you, chairman. I did just want to touch base on the proposed horrible incinerator. Obviously, we voted against it at this council, and Fennan District Council have also voted to oppose any incinerator in Wisbeach. And I did let you all know in the past that I did intend to take this to county as well. I wasn't able to take it to the last meeting, because they were only allowing items on the agenda that they deemed urgent, and officers deemed that that wasn't urgent. I did try and argue, but didn't win that one. However, it will be going to the next meeting of county council, where I hope we'll get then support from all three councils, and that should send a very strong message that we don't want it. Thank you.
That's great. Councillor Mall, please.
Thank you, chairman. Yeah, just going back to the proposal put forward by councillor Tierney in relation to Tinkers Drive, obviously, I seconded it and completely agree with him, and I just want to thank him for putting it forward. He did mention that he's got some other ideas, and obviously, we can only do one application here. I would welcome some time with councillor Tierney to discuss issues that have been raised, particularly with me in relation to the roads and highways around Waterleys at some stage in the future when we're able to. Thank you.
Councillor Tierney, please.
Yeah, I think that'd be excellent, actually, because there may be things, roads that people have told you about, they haven't mentioned to me. And what I'd like to get an idea of is the ones that the most people are concerned about, because we can only do so much at a time. And we've got some good news with highway surfacing coming forward soon, so that would be a bonus for Waterleys. But I think it's a good idea for us to work together and try and work out which roads to do in what order, and gradually make the area safer with actual physical measures. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more on item? Anybody else? Item number six. Confirm for signature by the chairman of when possible the minutes of the meeting of Wisbeach Town Council held on 18th of May 2020. These minutes have been circulated, and members have had opportunity to decide whatever they have on correct record of the last meeting of the council. I'm seeking your proposal and second for confirmation of these minutes. I shall make arrangements with the clerk for my signing of the minutes. Any comments on the minutes? So can I have a proposal, please? Councillor Hoy?
Be happy to propose.
Second, councillor Lynn, I think.
Yeah, happy to second that, chairman.
Can we have a vote, please?
Thank you, chairman. That's unanimous once again.
Thank you, members. Item number seven. Delegate of future to the minutes 10-12 to consider the need of continuances of powers which were delegated to the clerk to be exercised in consultation with the leader of the council and the relevant committee chairman, and took effect from 24th of March 2020. At 18th of May 2020, meeting of the council at minutes 10-12, members decided that the powers which had been delegated to the clerk be reaffirmed and continued at that time, with future continuance being reviewed at the next meeting of Wisbeach Town Council. As the powers to hold virtual meetings exist, it may be that delegated power no longer needs to be exercised. However, because of ongoing incentives and to provide the council with a mechanism which allows him to respond quickly to an issue such as urgent requests for grant funding, it may, on balance, be the best way to remain for the time being, but reviewed at the next meeting of the town council. I'm asking to propose and second for the course of action. Councillor Press, please.
Yeah, I'll propose that.
Councillor Hoy?
Yeah, I'm happy to propose that, although I would slightly amend it if Ben's happy with that, just to say that it would cease at the next meeting, because I don't think there'll be any need for it. And if there was need for it, we could always just put it on the agenda that we'd continue anyway, so I think we say that it continues until the next meeting when it ends. I feel happy to accept that.
Councillor Prest? Can I have a vote, please?
Once again, chairman, that is unanimous.
Thank you. Item number eight, Wisbeach Town Council account 2019-20 to consider annual return 2019-20 for submission for the council internal auditor. The message to be delivered in advance of the meeting. I invite the clerk to present the annual government's accountability return in relation to the financial year 2019-20. The annual government statement needs to be agreed first, followed by the accounting statements.
Thank you, chairman. Members will recall, or hopefully, I've seen an email that I sent out earlier, really just saying that unfortunately, and I apologize that we haven't been able to get the, it's not the accounts in terms of the records of income expenditure that we're having issues with, they were signed off by the policy committee, as I mentioned earlier. It's getting those figures to balance and tally with the annual return that we have to provide. Hope to have them out by Thursday of last week, but that hasn't proved possible. So, as I said, with an apology, I'd like to say that we get them signed off at the next meeting of the council. And as has been mentioned previously, certainly at the last meeting of the council, the deadline to get into external auditor is the 31st of August. So there is time to get to that process with the internal auditor between now and then for that to happen, if members are happy to proceed on that basis. But as I said, I apologize, we didn't manage to achieve what we did within our anticipated timescale. And that's mainly because we're working with a new accountancy system that came into force on the 1st of April, and there are some issues in terms of translating that data into the annual return data. So in the hands of members, chairman.
Any comments from the members? I think that's very understandable.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number nine. Clerk's report. I invite the clerk to update members on projection initiatives to inform the council or correspondents and to report minutes of the meeting of committees, etc.
Thank you, thank you, chairman. I agreed with the leader of the council last week that instead of having a number of separate agenda items that are mainly for information, I would pull them together in a sort of clerk's update, which I shall go through relatively quickly. It's quite a detailed report, but I wanted to give members quite a bit of information, so I'll pick out the edited highlights, excuse me, and then I'll forward it electronically to members tomorrow, so they can see more of the detail. Firstly, I'll talk about these delegated decisions, and I think it's worth mentioning under the power that has existed and continues to exist, the council has been able to provide grant funding to 50 backpacks. We've provided musical instruments to support a project to help develop young people who are in difficult circumstances. There's been the decision to support in principle the pavilion project that was mentioned earlier. We've engaged a design engineer to help to produce design options for the marketplace enhancements works, support towards the cost of providing tennis coaching for children in Wisbeach Park, which I think is due to kick off last week, sorry, next week. And we've also agreed within, well, actually, on the 3rd of July, myself in consultation with the leader of the council and the chairman of the Policy and Resources Committee, some funding of £320 to help the Wisbeach Rugby Club deal with some damage caused by vandals. I see councillor Tierney has his hand up.
Sorry, councillor Tierney, please.
Yeah, sorry, um, maybe my time scale is out, but I think we also provided funding for the hand sanitizer people. Now, maybe that happened before the last meeting and I've just lost track of time, but I thought we also gave a significant sum of money to help them with their wonderful work.
You're absolutely right, chairman, councillor, and I will add that to the list before I circulate it. Um, yes, you are absolutely right.
Good. Any more comments from the members?
So that, that, that's one section. I'll just go briefly through some of the projects and service delivery that's happening at the moment, just to give members a flavour. As you'd all be aware, there's been a considerable amount of work carried out by volunteers, including some of our own councillors in supporting people in need during the COVID-19 situation. We've sent out three sets of letters over recent weeks to those who are vulnerable and shielding residents to offer assistance with shopping, et cetera. Over 1,011, 1,100 letters have gone out over the last few weeks, um, for those volunteers to, um, pitch in and help those, those vulnerable people if they so asked. We've linked to COVID-19, we've launched, um, the Acts of Kindness campaign, partnered with the Fenn and Citizen, with an end date of 14th of July. Nominations have started to arrive and the idea is that we will give publicity, um, to those people who have undertaken acts of kindness to the community. Wisbeach Market, there again, COVID-19, we had a situation initially where we had to reduce down to food stalls only. In the last few weeks, we're now back to a full market. We've put in place appropriate measures to achieve social distancing. Um, and actually, not only have we got back all of our, um, pre-lockdown traders, we've actually got a waiting list now of people looking to come onto the market, which is the first time in a long time. Car boot trading returned yesterday and I understand it went very well. We're asking people to pre-book rather than just turn up so we can manage the COVID-19 situation. Allotments, the take-up of allotments has increased significantly. We've probably now got the highest level of tenancy that the council has had, and we also now have a waiting list for allotments at Waterleys. Moving on to communications, town council social media continues to create a high level of presence across Twitter, Facebook and Instagram. Um, and what we're looking to do is make Wisbeach Town Council's website and social, social media the go-to place for authoritative guidance and support across the town. Members will be aware of the Wisbeach app, which was launched in June and it already has 227, uh, members of the public who have, have signed up to it. We have a photo competition. Um, we're waiting for the, the Community Events and Festivals Committee to agree a winning photo for this month. And then what we'll do at the end of the year, as has been agreed with the leaders way forward, is at the end of the year, we'll pick an annual winner from those 12 and that will be used on the front cover for the town, Wisbeach Town Guide. To, to, to thank those people who've put photos in. The marketplace enhancements have already been touched upon. Um, yes, we've now gone through to stage two, as councillor Miss Hoy mentioned. And fingers crossed that we will be successful in terms of that funding and so you've already received an update. Looking at the enhancement scheme more widely, myself, the leader and the chairman of the Marketplace Management Committee have met with a, um, design engineer and also a civil engineering company. And we have commissioned a design engineer to carry out some, uh, three or four options that can be moved forward as potential, uh, design options for the, the, the central space initially. In terms of community events and festivals, members will be aware that the Wisbeach Day unfortunately was cancelled and was the Rock Festival. But we're closely monitoring government guidance in relation to social distancing and mass gatherings, um, to help see how that shapes or influences what events go on for the rest of this year. But we're currently working on the basis that Remembrance Sunday, Christmas Light Switch On and the Wisbeach Christmas Fair, delivered in partnership with the District Council, will be taking place and we're planning on that ba, that basis with fingers crossed. In terms of the town hall and the office, since COVID-19 lockdown, members of the public have only had access via telephone, email or post, which is operated very successfully with no apparent reductions in service to the public. Um, the arrangement will operate until at least the end of August. That's been agreed with the leader of the council, at which time we can review it. But on the base that members of the Assets Management Committee had said previously, their concerns about officer's security, especially if we got lone working, that could, if members are happy, be a sort of permanent way forward as a, as a general practice. That's something we consider. My understanding in terms of Wisbeach Castle, Billy, building is currently closed to the public. Whilst closed, a considerable amount of work has been undertaken by volunteers in relation to internal redecoration of the main building and development of, of the garden. And I'm working with the chairman of the management committee in terms of a meeting of the committee on the 20th of July. And last but not least, correspondence. Um, I have received thank you letters to the council in relation to small grants that were awarded by the last meeting of the Policy and Resources Committee from the Trinity Methodist Church, Cambridgeshire Search and Rescue, Relate, Waterleys in Bloom, Wisbeach Reads, Wisbeach in Bloom and the Wisbeach Music Society. Finally, I'd ask member to note the content of the minutes that were circulated of committees with the council agenda as Policy and Resources on the 18th of May, planning community infrastructure of the 26th of May and the same committee on the 15th of June. Um, that is my report. As I said, I will update it to include the hand sanitizer donation to Fenn Spirits and then circulate it, uh, out to members. Thank you, chairman.
If you'd like, councillor Hume, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, with reference to the market, uh, yesterday, excuse me. I did note there were a lot of car booters there, it was well supported. But there are also a tremendous amount of goods laying on the floor again. I don't know who's keeping an eye on it, but I think it needs to be mentioned. The majority of people are okay, but there were, there was also quite a quite a lot of, uh, goods just lying on the floor. I thought that was going to be dealt with.
Thank.
Uh, thank you. Yes, it's, it's not our practice to allow goods to be on the floor unless they're things like bicycles, concrete garden ornaments or furniture. Um, I will raise that with the, the person who we have at the moment who's operating on a contractual basis to ensure that our market operates in the way that it should.
Thank you. Councillor Tierney, please.
Thank you. Thank you, chairman. Um, I hope I'm not speaking out of turn and the, uh, the chairman, Sam Hoy of the Festivals Committee will agree, but, um, a lot of people would be very sad that due to the COVID situation, we've missed a number of the festivals that people love in the town. Like the, uh, you know, the Wisbeach Day and, uh, the Rose Fair and the Rock Festival sadly. And I, I just think all of us probably share the desire to make the forthcoming ones, the ones when COVID is over spectacular. I mean, I think all councillors will put everything into it to try and make sure that these are the most fantastic festivals the town's ever seen. And we will, we'll remind people of all the best that is Wisbeach.
Any more comments from the members, please? Thank you. Item number 10, um, date of the next meeting, to agree the date for the next meeting of Wisbeach Town Council. I will take proposals from members as, as to the date and time of the next meeting. Any proposals, please? Or please?
Uh, yeah, I mean, my, based on sort of comments that I made earlier with regard to the annual report, um, a good date in terms of that time scale would be Monday, the 10th of August. Obviously, it depends on members availability, um, for that date, chairman.
Councillor Lynn, please.
Could we also stick to this time as well, chairman, please, if possible? I think this is a good time. We're pretty much, most of us can make it. So that'd be great. Thank you.
Is 10th of August is okay for everyone?
And I'll send out a reminder email, chairman.
Yeah, 10th of, 10th of August, 7:30.
Yeah, 10th of Monday, 7:30 PM.
Yeah. Okay, that's everything. Thanks very much, everybody, for attending. Meeting closed. We have a next meeting now, so, um.